I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order tonight. Good evening to everyone. Today is January 23, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being recorded by the PB school committee's recording secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters list agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We have our full school committee, school board here tonight, as well as our superintendent, Herb Levine, our assistant superintendent, Kara Mertag, our business manager, Jared Stanton, and our human resources director, Steve Farrell. I'd like to first start off the meeting. If everybody could please rise for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. I also did want to mention that the PB school committee meeting tonight is being broadcast live on PAT. And now I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent who's going to introduce two extraordinary young students that we have today, Dr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Mark Higgins, who is the principal of the South School. Mark, welcome. And we have two wonderful students that I just had the opportunity to speak with a little bit and read about today. Madison Barrett is very involved in the South School. She's a member of the basketball team. She plays saxophone, which I'm gonna play when I retire, so you can teach me. Something I've wanted to do all my life and never had time to do it. And she's in the band playing the saxophone and volunteers in a first grade classroom before school each morning. That's a great thing to do, kid. Maddie is a great student and a wonderful role model for her classmates. Welcome, Maddie, and join the mayor, please, right over here. Derek Collins is a happy, hard-working member of the fifth grade class. Besides playing on the school basketball team, by the way, both the girls and the boys from the South School won today. Yay, yay. He is also a peer mentor in the box program before school. That's a great job, good job there, Derek, how to give back. Derek plays many organized sports in PBD and he always greets his classmates and teachers with a smile, as he greeted me tonight. Welcome, come, join us, Derek. Now if everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance, as Derek and Maddie lead us with the mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Great job. Thank you, parents, for being here.
Great. Again, thank you. Congratulations to two terrific students and their families. Next is approval of minutes. Open it up. We do have minutes of the regular school committee meeting from January 9, 2018.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Mrs. Dunn, to receive and approve, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Any comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. We have approval of bills now on the agenda. I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3696, dated January 23. Is this supposed to be 2017 or 18?
January 9, 2018.
Yeah. Warrant.
Warrant.
B.
Well, both.
What says 2018?
Oh, mine says 17. Dated January 23, 2018, and the amount of $138,285.60, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of warrant A, number 3696, seconded, motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3700, dated January 23, 2018, and the amount of $479,295.15, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant B, number 3700, by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next item, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the Higgins project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We held our monthly January meeting this past Thursday. The meeting took place at the conference room at City Hall where continuing meetings will also take place in the future. At that meeting, we followed up on several of the items that are pending. The commissioning program is proceeding and over the February vacation time, they will be in here pretty much the entire vacation, addressing the commissioning items. It's much easier to be able, especially with the air balancing, to be able to complete those. So they will be working on that. The drains are working well around the field. There was discussion about the need to re-seed and also to add some soil out back in certain areas, and they were areas that have already been visible, and it's not anything unexpected. So they'll be taking care of that in the spring. There was discussion about the mowing schedule and having something that is prepared for people to be able to refer to in discussions about who will take care of the specific areas of the property and when they need to be mowed and how they need to be taken care of, because there are so many different types of plantings out there. I'm not allowed to call it grass, because some of it isn't grass.
Plantings, that's what we're going with? Okay.
Yes. Yep. I learned something new. We also discussed the issue of the tinting of the windows in the gym. I brought forward that people were concerned about that. And again, that is something that our owners' project manager is going back to. They have had some communications with the company that installed the tinting, and they're going to enter into discussions with them to find out what some of the options are, to find out whether it can be made darker.
Because there is, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this, I've been concerned about this. So is there, there is allegedly a tinting.
Yes, there is.
A layer of tinting on the windows.
Right.
So they're looking to see if they can be, you know, further enhancements, or, because it is pretty powerful going through in the mornings.
It is. And one of the difficulties is, the suggestion had come up in the conversation about shades. As you can see, we've got shades here in the library. These library windows are tinted at the top as well. Shades in the gym would prove difficult, not impossible, but very costly, because they require an electric motor. Because of the location of those windows, you couldn't have manual shades in that area. In the other end of the building, what we'll call the performing arts wing, those windows are being treated, and they're going to be looked at to see whether, in some areas, whether a shade would help, and in that case, it would be a less expensive solution to the sunlight. But they are in talks with the company that originally did the tinting to find out, you know, what was it going to do, because people don't think, they can't see any tinting. So they, you know, I know a lot of members of the public are frustrated by it. So that came up, and we will be having a February meeting, the third Thursday of the month, at 4:00 PM at City Hall in the lower level conference room.
Great.
At 4:00.
Thank you, as always, Mrs. Dunn, for that report.
Um, Mr. Barr.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Miko, did you have any comment?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Dunn, thank you so much for all that. Staying with the gymnasium here at the Higgins, the light switch, the outlets.
Yes.
Entering from the parking lot side, we asked for a cradle or a casing over that, because if someone bumps into them, all the lights in the gymnasium turn off simultaneously, and they go from lights to pitch dark, and that could pose a risk, especially for night practices and games.
I agree. It's actually on the punch list, and they're going through the punch list, so they've got it down from, oh, boy, at one point, I think it was 44,000 items, which can be anything from a missing screw in a wall, on up to, you know, heavy-duty equipment problems. But that is on the punch list, and that, they have been made aware of it now. I've told them twice in the last month. So I know they're going, they are going to put that up. They also said they know of a couple other areas with the same issue, and they want to install that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And one other item, signage will be going up. They're still working on signage for the exterior, as well as some interior signs. So those will be coming in.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? The microphone is open. Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna go to presentate, we have a presentation tonight. I want to thank all the educators, parents that are here today. I want to make special note of the president of the PBD Federation of Teachers, Bruce Nelson, is here tonight. Also, our city council from Ward 1, John Turco, is here as well. I want to thank everybody for coming. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Levine for an introduction of our presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every time you say the mic is open, I get this urge to jump in and start talking or singing. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Judy Owens. Dr. Owens is an expert in the research of school start times, sleep, and other areas that are important to us in this discussion. And I believe that you're affiliated with Mass General, is that right, Dr. Owens?
Yeah, Boston Children's.
Boston Children's Hospital. Oh, second-rate unit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to thank you so much. I know that you're local, you live in Beverly, and.
I do.
Yeah, and we thank you so much for being willing to come and join us tonight, make a presentation, as we begin our very, very early discussions on school start times. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Owens.
Could we get a microphone for Dr. Owens?
So, excuse me for being sort of over in a corner here and talking to the rest of the class. Can you hear me?
We're gonna get your microphone.
No, hold on one second. Great. Is that better?
Yes.
Is that better? Good. Sorry, I don't want anybody to trip. So I am the Director of Sleep Medicine at Boston Children's Hospital, and I've been working on this issue of school start times for over 10 years now, both from the standpoint of doing research in the area, but I've also been involved in giving talks all around the country and advocating for this, really as a public health issue. And I hope that's one of the things that I'll be able to get across to you this evening. So what I wanted to cover, and I know you're just in your preliminary examination, a little bit about what some of the consequences of insufficient sleep in middle and high school students are, and then some of the research that supports changing school start times, typically delaying start times, as a way to mitigate some of these health, safety, and academic performance consequences. So I just wanted to start out by listing some of the statements that I hear all the time when I talk to different audiences about this. Teens would just go to sleep earlier if their parents made them do it. So this implies that some of the important circadian biology changes that occur around the time of puberty, so that kids are just not able to fall asleep as early as they did when they were younger, can kind of be overcome by parental discipline. And I hope, as we go along through the presentation, you'll see that really all of these misconceptions are exactly that. Some teens might need nine hours of sleep, but mine just does fine with six, and so do I. Take the cell phones, TVs, laptops, tablets away, and kids will fall asleep. If school starts later, they'll just stay up later, and it won't do any good, and they'll just have to cram in the same amount of stuff, extracurricular activities, homework, et cetera, in a shorter amount of time. Teens can just make up for lost sleep by sleeping late on weekends or going to school later one day a week. Kids need to learn to get up early, that's real life, and they'll survive. So let's explore these. I really like to refer to the changes that are occurring on a biological basis for adolescents as kind of a perfect storm scenario. And when I say adolescents, I mean both middle and high school students, because so many of these biological changes are linked not to age, but to puberty onset. And as those of you who are middle school teachers or parents of middle schoolers, you know that puberty rears its head during those years, and is certainly part of that developmental experience. So all adolescents experience a normal shift in their circadian rhythms in association with the onset of puberty that results in a biologically-based shift or delay of up to several hours in terms of both their natural fall asleep time and their wake time. On a practical level, due to what's called the forbidden zone, which is that period just before our bodies are ready to fall asleep, during which we have a surge in alertness. And it's very hard to try to fall asleep during that hour or so before we're naturally ready to fall asleep. So this means it's almost impossible for the average adolescent to fall asleep much before 11:00 PM on a regular basis. And teens and parents of teens cannot make them fall asleep earlier. They can make them go to bed earlier, but you can lead a teen to sleep, but you can't necessarily make him, you can lead him to bed, but you can't necessarily make him sleep. Now, in fairness, there are definitely environmental factors which also conspire to make this whole biological process even more complex, such as competing priorities for sleep, like homework, social networking, after-school employment for some students, screen time. And so this circadian phase delay, the shift to a later bedtime, can be further exacerbated by exposure to light, particularly from screens, in the evening. Because that light, especially blue light shining directly into your eyes, suppresses the body's natural release of melatonin, which is a hormone which helps you to fall asleep. So there's no question that this screen exposure in the hour or so, particularly before bed, also adds to this whole picture. Now, this shift in, remember, both fall asleep time and wake time is in direct conflict with earlier high school start times, i.e. before 8:30, and I'll talk a little bit more about that number in a bit. Because adolescents are biologically programmed to wake up at about 8 o'clock in the morning. So as a result of early school start times, students are required to wake for the day, to be alert, to be at their top of the game, at the time when their brain is at what we call the circadian nadir, which is the lowest point of alertness in the 24-hour day. It's like asking all of us as adults to wake up and function at 3:00 in the morning every single day. Now, the other issue is that what's called REM, or rapid eye movement sleep, what we think of as dream sleep, is actually concentrated in the last third of the night. And so if you have to get up too early, that selectively robs you of this REM sleep. And why is that important? Because REM sleep is absolutely critical for learning of new information. So if you have a period of REM sleep, after you've learned a new task, you will retain the ability to complete that task much more efficiently. So what we see is adolescents trying to make up for sleep lost during the week by sleeping in on weekends. And so that shift, that discrepancy between their bedtime and wake time, Monday through Friday, and then on the weekends, in and of itself, causes further problems with disruption of the circadian rhythm. And furthermore, it doesn't help them compensate for not getting enough sleep during the week when they need to be performing at their highest level. And so this leads to a situation that we call circadian misalignment. It's like being a shift worker, where you're trying to sleep and be awake at times that are at odds with your normal circadian rhythms. The other thing that happens is when students sleep in till noon or 1:00 in the afternoon on Sunday, is they're not awake long enough to be able to fall asleep, an hour come Sunday night, and the whole cycle starts all over again. So this actually has led us to coin a term called social jet lag. It's like adolescents are flying from Logan Airport to LAX and back every weekend. And so they're shifting their bedtime and wake time by three hours, and then three hours back, and we know that it's always harder coming in the eastward direction in terms of jet lag, and it takes about one day per time zone crossed to adjust. So these kids, because of this weekend oversleep phenomenon, are in a semi-permanent state of jet lag, and that in turn is associated not only with daytime sleepiness, but poor academic performance, depressed mood, and other kinds of health effects. So for optimal, optimal, and that's what we all want for our kids, right? Health, safety, and achievement, the average middle and high school student needs eight to 10 hours of sleep a night. In Massachusetts, for example, not to particularly point a finger at any schools, but at Algonquin Regional High School, for example, 52% of students were getting less than six hours of sleep in 2014. In another study, 82% of Masconomet Regional students surveyed were getting less than or equal to sleep, and 41% were getting less than or equal to six hours of sleep, and less than 1 in 5 were getting the recommended eight to 10 hours. And this is not an anomaly. This is the same story all over the United States, but neither is Massachusetts exempt from this. So what are some of the effects? Well, deficient sleep, which is defined as both not getting enough sleep to meet your sleep needs, and sleep which occurs out of alignment with your circadian rhythms, negatively impacts cognitive functions. In particular, higher-level cognitive functions, such as decision-making, problem-solving, planning, organization, and other what we call executive functions. And the thing is that these development of these executive functions is at its most rapid state during adolescence. It also affects attention, memory, as I mentioned, learning of new tasks, emotional regulation, and risk-taking behaviors, and misinterpretation of rewards and consequences. So that people who are chronically sleep-deprived take more chances, more risks, because they perceive less in the way of negative consequences for that risk-taking behavior. And think about how that would naturally spell out in the adolescent population. And so what you see in terms of health effects is an increased risk of being overweight or obese. Poor cardiovascular health with an increased risk of high blood pressure, for example. Metabolic dysfunction, an increased risk for type 2 diabetes. Accidental injuries, sports-related injuries, work-related injuries, motor vehicle accidents, which is the number-one killer of adolescents in the United States. Pedestrian accidents. And interestingly enough, insufficient sleep is also linked to other safety behaviors. So kids who get less sleep are less likely to use bicycle helmets or seat belts, and they're more likely to text and drink while driving, adding further to these kinds of consequences. And we know one of the most powerful effects of insufficient and mistimed sleep is depression, and even suicidal thoughts and behavior, as well as risk behavior, such as alcohol and substance use, risky sexual behavior, bullying behavior, et cetera. Academic performance, in many studies, has been shown to be compromised, including grade point average, especially, as you might imagine, for first-period classes, when students really are sleeping through their courses. But also in terms of standardized test scores, tardiness and attendance rates, and even graduation rates are affected by insufficient sleep. So in 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a policy statement calling for a start time in middle and high school students, schools, of 8:30 or later. I was the lead author on that policy statement. And I think this was a very important step in changing the conversation to be one about health and well-being of students, as well as academic performance. But unfortunately, less than 1 in 5 middle and high school students in the U.S. start at this recommended time. And in Massachusetts, the average school start time in 2015 for public middle and high schools was 7:37 AM, which is actually earlier than it was in 2011 and 2012, so we're going, we're losing ground here. And only two schools in the entire state start at 8:30 or later. And unfortunately, students in general, and earlier starting schools, are more likely to be minority students, to be eligible for free lunches, so economically disadvantaged, and have less educated parents. So you're piling this on top of the other kinds of disadvantages that some of these students face. So what do we see when we delay school start times? And there's less data on middle schools here. Most of the data I'm gonna be presenting is on high schools, but we see very similar patterns in those studies that have looked at middle schools. So bedtimes remain the same, or even in some cases, like a study that we did, shift earlier. We looked at an independent school that shifted their high school start time later by 30 minutes, just 30 minutes. But the students, on average, ended up getting 50 minutes more sleep, because their bedtimes actually shifted 20 minutes earlier. And we didn't expect that, so, but anecdotally, what the students told us were, number one, they felt so much better getting that extra half hour of sleep, that they were motivated to go to bed earlier, and number two, because they were more awake and alert in the evening, they could complete their homework faster and they could get to bed earlier. And that's an important trade-off, because when people are chronically sleep-deprived, they trade accuracy and efficiency. So they get the right answer eventually, but it takes them longer to get there, and it takes them more time to complete the same amount of homework. Students get more sleep, especially that critical morning sleep. The later the start time, the greater the sleep amounts, but even a 30-minute delay can have a highly significant impact. But the caveat that I would add to that is that it not only is how much you change the start time, it's what you change it to. And that 8:30 recommendation has turned out to be very important. Now, that doesn't mean you shouldn't do it if you can't get to 8:30, but you're going to get a bigger bang for your buck if you change the start time to 8:30 or later. Students report less daytime sleepiness, such as falling asleep in class or doing homework. So again, this 8:30 seems to be the sweet spot, both in terms of getting students enough sleep and getting them the sleep and getting them the sleep they need at the right time. School performance, in study after study, tardiness goes down, attendance improves, dropout rates decline, standardized test scores improve, even in the highest-achieving students, grades improve, especially in core subjects. And again, disadvantaged students may actually benefit more, and they may see larger impacts of later school start times, especially those students who are at the lower end of the grade distribution. And students from minority groups may benefit more. All students benefit, but there may be some differences across populations. Delayed school start times are associated with improvements in mood, patients, students reporting feeling less depressed, for example, health, decreased visits to the health center. And to me, this is the biggest and perhaps most important piece of this, is safety. So one study in Kentucky, in which the school's start time was changed from 7:30 to 8:40, the percent of teens involved in car crashes decreased in that county by 16% versus a 9% increase in the rest of the state. In another study in Virginia, which compared two adjacent counties, which were very similar sociodemographically, one had a high school that started at 7:20 and the other at 8:40, and they had a 40% higher crash rate among adolescents in the earlier-starting county, and those crashes occurred in the morning hours, during the morning commute. And finally, a study from the Centers for Disease Control that was published a few years ago showed a reduction in car crash rates in teens associated with delay in school start times by as much as 65 to 70%. As a public health person, it's hard to imagine a public health measure that would have that much of an impact on lives. If you want to talk about dollars and cents, Brookings Institute published a report back in 2011 that identified the three changes that schools, public schools, could make that would have the biggest impact on student achievement and earning potential. And one of those three was delaying high school start times by one hour, with a benefit-to-cost ratio of 9 to 1, related to offsetting by transportation costs, because that's usually what the price tag is for changing school start times, compared to the increased in projected future earnings per student due to standardized test score gains. And a more recent study by the Rand Corporation that was published just last year looked at the potential significant economic gains of a statewide shift to an 8:30 or later start time. And they looked at both student earning potential, but they also looked at the cost of car crashes and the reduction in car crashes as a result of that change. So the economic gain, which was modeled across 47 states in the U.S., estimated an annual gain of $9.3 billion, which is roughly the annual revenue of Major League Baseball, and that Massachusetts, and this is a statewide change in school start times, would see one of the highest cost-benefit ratios in the nation, at minimum, breaking even after just two years, and achieving a cost-benefit ratio of 4.5 after 10 years, meaning that for every dollar spent, the return is more than fourfold the cost. And I will tell you that we, meaning the Massachusetts Chapter of Start School Later, is working with the state legislature to introduce a bill that would mandate 8:30 or later start times for all middle, public middle and high schools in the state, that is, will be modeled on the California bill. So stay tuned. This is a long-haul project, but part of that is meant to address some of the concerns that every single community in Massachusetts who's thinking about doing this faces. And I absolutely, totally understand the challenges, and I totally understand how hard this is, and the effort that is involved in really thinking through this issue and making decisions about whether this should go forward or not. But one solution to each individual community making these decisions is to have this become a statewide resolution. I just wanted to touch on elementary school start times, because you may have heard, this is one of the things that derailed the Boston Public Schools School Committee decision to delay school start times for middle and high schools. So what are the issues? So many schools which have decided to change start times have done this with what's called the "flip" strategy. So basically, the middle and high school students go to school later, and the elementary school students go earlier. And that preserves a tiered busing system, and generally results in less, or even in some cases, a no-cost solution. So for younger kids, their sleep needs are higher, they're more like 9 to 12 hours. They tend to be morning larks, so their circadian preference is to go to bed earlier and get up earlier. Now, they too are subject to a lot of other competing priorities for sleep, but in general, parents have more control over access to those other things, like exposure to electronic media. As opposed to adolescents, though, they are biologically, environmentally, and socially more amenable to manipulation of their bedtimes. I.e., if school starts earlier, it's easier to get elementary school kids to go to bed earlier, so they still get enough sleep. Is there a sweet spot? The data is mixed, but suggests that somewhere between 7:30 and 9:00 a.m. is probably avoids safety issues related to civil twilight and having young students wait for the bus in the dark, but also doesn't have them going to bed so late, I mean, going to school so late. So they've been up for two or three hours by the time they get in school, and then they get out at late in the afternoon, and that doesn't really fit well with their performance So the lessons that we have learned from dealing with many, many school districts around the country are the following. Superintendent support and leadership is critical. The superintendent isn't behind this, then it's dead in the water. School board involvement, and thank you all for listening to me tonight, is absolutely critical, absolutely critical. But also other school leaders, principals, teacher support, incredibly important, not only at the high school level, but the middle school and the elementary school levels as well. Student engagement. Getting students can be your worst enemies or your best proponents of this. Critical role of educating the community. You cannot skip that step, because that leads to community engagement, and the idea that you have to get the key stakeholders involved. And in every community, it's a little bit different. It might be the police. You know, there was a, still a bill in Congress proposed by Representative Zoe Lofgren of California called the Z's to A's Act. And this was first filed back in the early '90s. And it was originally proposed as an anti-crime, anti-teen pregnancy bill, because the idea is if school starts later, it ends later, and there's less opportunity for teens to be at home unsupervised and to get into trouble. So engaging your local law enforcement community can be an important step, for example. So thinking outside of the box as to whom in the community would be affected by this. Employers who hire teenagers to work after school, that's an important constituency. There are many, many, many stakeholders, and you and your community know far better than I do who is important to engage. It's absolutely critical to, if you make this decision, to allow adequate time for families to become informed and to make plans prior to implementation. We worked with Fairfax County, Virginia, which is the 11th-largest school district in the country, 27 high schools, 187,000 students, to change their start time. And the school committee voted in October of 2014, and it went into implementation the following fall. And it's been a great success, I will say. Each community faces different, unique challenges, but you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And talking to your comrades in other communities who perhaps are a little bit farther along in this process, and I would particularly encourage you to contact the Massachusetts Chapter of Start School Later. They are a wealth of information, they have dedicated volunteers who are absolutely happy to work with you to solve some of these challenges. Not all students will benefit equally, but the goal, as always, is to provide the greatest good for the greatest number of students. And the anticipation, and we found this out in interviewing school districts that had done this successfully, that the anticipation is almost always worse than the reality. So districts will think that there is going to be a huge impact on sports and sports participation, and teacher retention, and after-school programs, and traffic flow, and childcare issues. And most of these, in most communities, do not materialize to the extent that was originally projected. And communities, if they are really behind this with the leadership of the district, can successfully overcome these challenges. So that's the end of my soapbox, and happy to take any questions or comments.
So first of all, thank you very much, Dr. Owens. While the school committee is returning to the table, we have time for just a couple of questions from the audience, if there are any. Dr. Owens, can you take them? Okay, school committee?
Thank you, Dr. Owens, thank you. Anybody, school committee have any questions at this time? There's a lot of information. Mrs. Kopener?
Sorry. Here, come over here. We have to talk to the mic because it's being televised. I just want to thank you for all of that information. It was very enlightening. You covered a lot of topics that I personally hadn't considered before. Do you happen to know, I know you gave some data on the crash prevention, you know, that it had decreased in one county versus the other one. Do you have any data on any schools that have recently changed, not too recently, their start time in regards to their educational piece, their testing, their scores, anything like that?
Well, yes. In that Centers for Disease Control report that, and I'm happy to get you any of their references, that looked, they looked at eight different schools in very different communities around the country, and they found that in five of the six schools in whom they could get reports of that GPA, that grades improved overall. And that's a tricky thing to look at, because grades are affected by so many different things. Several studies have looked at standardized test scores improving. I think perhaps the most compelling piece of the school performance is this attendance, and decreased dropout rates, and improved graduation rates, which have been shown in several large studies to be associated with change in start times.
That's excellent. One of my other questions is, you talked about how this, the change happens during puberty, and that's the most vulnerable time. When does it end? Are you saying that this extends into college, or, you know, is that something that it goes beyond high school? When does it end?
Yeah, I mean, that's an excellent question. I think the best information we have suggests that somewhere in the early to mid-'20s, that reverses somewhat, but it obviously never goes back to the level of, you know, elementary school students who are real morning larks until you get to be my age. And then you start to see, second childhood, right? You start to see an advance, you start to see earlier fall asleep and wake times. But somewhere, we think, so most college students, but the thing about college is that colleges don't even have 8:00 classes anymore. You know, students opt to take their first class at 10 or 11:00 o'clock, so they have much more control over their schedule, and they're able to accommodate their schedules to their circadian rhythms, whereas high school students cannot do that.
Right. Well, thank you, it was very enlightening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Kopener. Any other questions, Mr. Harkman?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Owens, thank you, thank you very much for presenting this evening. I wonder, do we, do we have a copy of this?
It's on this computer, and you're more than welcome.
Thank you, I want to make sure there's no proprietary interest on your part.
Yeah, it's a lot of information to digest all at once, so, you know, and I'm happy to send you whatever additional information you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. And frankly, you're the beginning of the conversation for this community and the school committee on this subject. We've talked about it a little bit, very little in some subcommittee meetings, but this was an important day. This is an important presentation for people to hear the benefits of delayed school start times that are real, that are scientifically based, and that have real impact on students, on people. And there are a lot of hurdles, and those hurdles are real as well. I think personally that those are surmountable hurdles, but they're, deal with negotiations with bargaining units, and they deal with transportation. And, you know, we live in a community that is active athletically with other communities and working schedules. To coordinate start times for athletic events is significant and important to student athletes and to a lot of other people. So with that, I do want to thank you, because you've cracked the ice, whether you know it or not. And I think that that's important, because I'm hopeful that this conversation continues and that we delve into the data that you've kind of given us a glimpse of, and at some point, make a decision as a community whether it's something that we elect to participate in. So thank you for cracking the ice for us.
You're very welcome, very welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you. Dr. Owens, thank you. This really was an excellent presentation. You gave us a lot of food for thought. I do have a couple of questions. One is, when you go through your research and you're looking at all of the positives of starting later for the adolescents, were there any negatives to that at all? Did you find any health problems that would be negatively affected by starting later?
We did not find any obvious negatives. In some of the studies, some outcomes that were measured didn't improve, but none of them went in the negative direction, to my knowledge, and I follow this literature fairly carefully. However, the caveat there is that as a scientific community, we tend not to publish negative results. So, you know, and that's our fault, but, so, you know, there may be, and I'm sure there are downsides in terms of practical considerations, you know, things like parents having to change their work schedules, maybe students not being able to work as long in after-school jobs, childcare arrangements, if older students are expected if older students are expected to take care of their younger siblings after school. So there are negatives to this, but in terms of the actual outcome, the health and safety and academic outcomes of the change on students, we don't see any negatives.
Okay. And if I may, on the proposed legislation, do you know what stage that's at as far as in Massachusetts with a mandate to have the later start times?
Well, so the California bill that unfortunately was very narrowly defeated last winter, basically, and this bill is modeled after that, would mandate within a certain time period, you know, five years, for example, that all public middle and high schools, and there would be an opportunity to apply for exemptions, but those would be pretty strictly doled out, would be required to start at 8:30 or later. And, you know, we've kind of gone back and forth about how much language we should include about elementary schools. Just because we don't have as much data about that to really hang our recommendations on, we're a little bit less, we're a little bit more reluctant to prescribe that. But, and there would be, you know, the idea is, is this wouldn't be an unfunded mandate. There would be financial incentives for communities to participate in this. It's still in the process of being worked out, but we have some potential very strong supporters within the legislature who are interested in moving this forward. And frankly, I would love to see Massachusetts take the lead and become the first state to do this on a statewide basis. We are leaders in education and in science and so many different things that I think this state could really do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you for the chair. Doctor, thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. You mentioned financial benefits to districts or cities with the bill. What kind of benefits would it be towards busing? Where would you envision those financial benefits reaching?
Well, so, there may be two different issues here. So when I presented the RAND Corporation data about statewide implementation, this was a model that looked at the cost per student each year to change start times that was largely based on transportation costs, additional buses, additional bus drivers, et cetera, as well as factoring in the cost related to increased car crashes in, by not, you know, not changing the start times. And then comparing that to projected earnings of the students. So in looking at that sort of economic modeling, which I don't pretend to understand the math behind that, they were able to look at each state individually and to project what the cost-benefit ratio would be. Now, when you're talking on an individual school district level, for some districts, it costs more because they have to buy, purchase more buses. Sometimes lighting athletic fields might be included in the cost, maybe additional childcare arrangements for parents might be included in that. But the main cost is transportation. Some districts have gone from a two-tier to a three-tier system and actually saved money by doing that. And for other communities, it's been a no-cost solution. So it really depends on sort of where you are, how many students ride the bus, how many buses you have, you know, what, how many routes you have. And so working with the Office of Transportation in a school district is absolutely critical. I mean, I can't tell you how many hours we spent with Fairfax County, having to transport, you know, 183,000 students. You know, on coming up, we literally came up with 26 different busing scenarios. And they ended up with a cost of $5 million. But for a school district that is that large, I mean, that's literally something like .01% of their budget. So all of those factors need to be taken into consideration. But I guess, you know, at the end of the day, in my mind, the cost of not doing this in terms of the impact on students' health and well-being, you know, really outweighs any of the financial costs incurred.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Olympio?
Dr. Owens, thank you so much for the presentation. Very informative. The studies that you referenced, how old are they? How far do they go back? And when you're comparing percentage fluctuations, is it year to year, or is it over a period of few years?
It's both. So the original studies were done in 1996 and 1997. So we have a long experience with this. And that was, those initial studies were done in Edina, Minnesota, which is a suburb of Minneapolis, and in Minneapolis. And those, they followed those kids for a number of years. We just published some of our data from Fairfax County. We did a pre and post a year later. And that's most of the studies, you know. But now, we are starting to do more longitudinal studies, so we're looking at, okay, after the first year we see these changes, are they sustained after that? And I think that is a very important question.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Arnotis?
Well, thank you, Dr. Owens, for being here. I'm thrilled you're here. I love what happens on this stage right now. I think, you know, this is stepping in the water here. I've lived it more recently than most, I can tell you that. I believe our bell rings at 7:20 at high school as a start. Is that correct? Yeah. So I'll tell you, my senior year of high school was, my first period was the 8:00 semester. So I'm sure you can imagine what that was like at 7:20 a.m. with probably, one of my best teachers, but one of the toughest around, and she expected 150% at 7:21. So I understand this, I appreciate it, and I really, I hope, everyone watching out there is open to this idea. I think a lot of the factors that prevent people from taking this or seeing these considerations are factors that are, is more for them or outside interests and not for the health of the student. And I think statistic doubt after statistic, the numbers are there, that it benefits the kids at the end of the day when you move it back. So I know we're just dipping our toe in the water here, but I hope this is something that can get the ball rolling over a long period of time, just so we do it correctly. In Boston, we gave a template on how not to do it, so we could do it properly. And on the legislative end, I'll do some research on this tomorrow myself and make some calls and see if I can get some, like, if it's floating around in the state, so I'll be able to track it down. So we'll go from there.
Well, and I really would urge you to contact other districts. And if you go to the Start School Later website for the Massachusetts chapter, they have up-to-date information on who's doing what around the state. And there are a lot of other communities like yours who are just at the beginning of the contemplation stage for this, and there are some that are much further along. So I think learning from each other is really critical because I can tell you, you know, from 30,000 feet up in the air in my ivory tower at Harvard Medical School what to do, but you need to talk to other people who are doing this, who are thinking about doing the same thing and living in the trenches, because that really was, is the most important message. I can tell you the science, but in terms of the logistics of implementation, those are the people that you want to talk to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnotis, for your comments. Terrific. Dr. Levine, thank you for arranging this, and Dr. Owens, thank you again for being here.
Anytime. I'm just up the road, so you know where to find me.
Dr. Owens, you're in the blue.
All right. That is great.
Thank you so much for, uh...
Mrs. Dunn?
Oh, we're still on this topic. Could I ask a couple of things of Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh?
Of course.
Going forward, could we begin looking at some data up at the high school? I don't know if it's available at the moment, but could we look at, when students are tardy, how late are they? Are they coming in like one minute after the bell rings, or are they, you know, half an hour late? Could we, would it be possible to find that out, just so that we could have that and look at that going? Because I know this is the beginning, but may as well start looking at some things. And another point, gosh, I wish we had heard Dr. Owens' presentation earlier. The high school just finished with their midterm exams, that whole time period, and they have a half a day for each of those exam times. It would have been a great, it would have been a great thing to see if, instead of starting the exams at 7:20, if we could, because they get out early, if we could have switched it and scheduled those exams later in the day. Now, I don't know how the, I don't know how the data would play out if you tried it with the final exams. I don't know. Might just be a suggestion to see if we could adjust those times. But the final exams are very different. You have seniors taking them at one point, and then the rest of the students at another. But what time do we start MCAS for the 10th grade at the high school?
Usually, they get in, we do breakfast. Usually around 8:00, quarter to 8:00, 8 o'clock.
Okay, so 8 o'clock. So there's something right there. We might want to look at starting MCAS later in the day if, is there time, you know, if there is time to do that. Also, to look at the timing of the MCAS at the Higgins', and I would even say, look at it at the elementary schools. I don't remember what time those are given, but if, and with the little kids, the elementary school kids, it doesn't seem to be as big of an issue. But especially with your eighth graders, being able to have that discussion now, because I know you'll be planning the administration of the MCAS exams in a couple of months. So we do have time, if we could, to adjust that and at least use some of the research right now. If it shows that people are more on topic and, you know, more with it later in the day, let's go for it. It'll help the kids. But I do thank you for bringing this in. It really is a huge, huge project going forward. I think it is going to take a lot of time, and I know that, you know, ideally, the health of the students is the most important thing. And sitting here, we always end up with a lot of the actual practical aspects of these types of necessities and changes. The biggest one, and everyone knows it, is because of our tiered bus system. I can't imagine Fairfax County, that must have been a nightmare. But, you know, if we could start looking at potential costs and the logistics of changing our bus schedules, I know that's something that's going to take some time, but there would be a lot of different configurations, you know, it would be, we'd need a meeting just for the transportation issues, but we need to start pulling some information together so that we can gather that and really start to make some plans on what's going to work for puberty.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Just a couple of things. Mr. Hockman chairs the Subcommittee on Redistricting, don't? Does that change? You do.
Oh, redistricting.
Oh, redistricting.
Yeah, but what about the start times?
That, Miss Murphy.
Randy. So we have a...
Start times.
Okay. We have a Subcommittee, and one of the first things we did was ask Transportation Director, just for the heck of it, to run three different schedules to see how we could, and none of them worked. But that's only because we didn't spend a whole lot of time on it. But it will take effort, energy, and time to construct something that might work for us that's also not extremely costly. But you're absolutely right. The middle school already starts, what, 8:30? So they already start at 8:30. So the REMCAS exams would probably start 9 o'clock, 9:15 anyway. But I think it's, the high school is very well worth looking at, including final exams. I think you're absolutely right. You hit on something I didn't think about. It wouldn't, there's no reason why the midterm exams couldn't start later, and probably the final exams as well. So we will have that conversation.
Okay. And I'd also like to put forward, we have a student advisory board, and this is the perfect opportunity to hear from those students. They represent the high school. And I'd like to suggest, we have them coming before us in February, to ask the students to be prepared to speak on this and see what the students think about it, and if they have any ideas, any information. I mean, we heard from the students who were on the Health Advisory Board, they had great input at our last meeting. You can learn a lot from the kids. And truthfully, this is what we should be doing with our student advisory board, because this impacts the high school students. And we have a group of five or six students who are actually elected to serve as the spokespeople for their classmates. So I think we should have them, give them a heads up that we'd really like to talk with them and put that on the agenda for the February 27th meeting.
That's a great point. We'll make that happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. This, the school start time is a really hot topic item. It's very popular. It's what a lot of parents are talking about. In that regard, as Dr. Levine has said, we did initially bring this forward to transportation, to athletics, to some of the people that really needed to give us some answers as to whether or not this could work. But it was the really early stages. Just to kind of put it on their radar, to see if anything kind of came straight out and said, absolutely not, you can't do it, or, you know, geez, let me think about that a little bit more. One of the things I think that we should do moving forward is, the people that this is going to affect the most are the parents, the students, and the educators, the staff. I think at this point in time, I think it would be wise of us to put a survey out. We're going to begin doing a lot of investigation into this, and we need to see if our community wants it, if it's something that they're interested in. I do get a lot of phone calls, and I see a lot of social media with some people who are definitely not interested in it, and some people who are. And I think if we can put together a survey at each level, elementary, middle, high schools, the elementary students, you know, they could have, they're going to be heading that way, our staff, our union, we need to gauge our community first, I think, and see if our efforts are worthwhile, if that's what the majority of people are looking at. So, you know, Dr. Levine and I have met a few times with some other stakeholders. I would be happy to put a survey together with him, or if this committee would like to submit it or work on it together. But I think that might be one of the first steps we should take.
Through the chair. I will call Dr. Owens on that. There may be a survey already done and vetted for scientific reliability that they have used in different communities. So rather than reinventing the wheel, let's take a look and see if they have that available.
Right. And I would like it for students, parents, you know, have the union go over it, staff, those type of things, and kind of just gauge where everybody's at at this, just to make sure where, what we're doing is worthwhile.
Great. I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair of the committee. Ms. Carpenter, you actually, that was something I was thinking about, definitely getting the stakeholders involved, because the unions, the parents, educators, and obviously, students are all stakeholders. The one thing that might be the easiest thing to do in this case here, too, is to look at the possibility, and it's been out there, of flipping high school, elementary, if we could get some costs, and I know some numbers have been put out there in the past, maybe we could get cost on busing, just so we could also bring that out to the residents and the stakeholders, just so they can see that impact as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm excited because this was an important first step. We've met Ms. Carpenter's leadership in the Subcommittee a few times, and it became apparent to me at least that nothing was going to change. We weren't going to make this dramatic of a change without committee support. And what I'm hearing tonight is that everyone seems to be at least open-minded about receiving the data, getting more information, both scientific information and opinions of stakeholders as far as, so that we can evaluate it and use that as a piece of determining what we're going to do going forward. going to do going forward. So I am really excited about that. I will point out that closing school for snow days has as much of an impact on all of those stakeholders, and that we don't offer any opportunity for those people to render an opinion. That being said, I think Ms. Carpenter makes a great point and that we should go through the, the process of polling all of the stakeholders to get their opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Excellent. Okay. We will now go to, back to the agenda. Our superintendent's report, Dr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I understand, Mr. Hockman, there are quite a few opinions floating around about closing school, but-
They're post, they're post-decision, though.
None of which I pay attention to, by the way.
I think there's a survey out there.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I began my eloquent soliloquy last time we were together before I was so rudely interrupted regarding the business office clerk position, you were right. I, I just want to revisit it, and I'll try to revisit it quickly. There was a position that we now think is critical to the functioning of both human resource and business offices. We are paying the price for this position that was not filled, it was allowed to remain vacant through attrition a few years ago. The human resource office used to be a two-person office, it's now a one-person office. The things that that other person did went over to the business office, and we have found that we're at critical mass now, where the business office is unable to function at, at efficiency levels that we need because of the significant increase in workload without any help to go with it. So we have wound up paying overtime in order to meet union contractual obligations and make sure our payroll gets out on time, minimize errors, et cetera. We've had to pay significant overtime, which in some sense, by the end of the year, will almost approach replacing this position. I think that particularly from now until the end of the year, it will cost the budget relatively little money, and when you consider the overtime that we will no longer have to pay, no money. So I am recommending to you that you give me authority to refill the position that was vacated a few years ago and make the human resource office a two-person office again so that we can reshift the areas that went over to the business office back to human resources.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Open that up for discussion. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine, are you looking for a vote this evening or are you looking to put this into committee?
Either way, whatever the committee desires.
So I will just say that I do recall when this position vacated, at that time, we did not replace. That tend to be a habit that we fell into. Money wasn't the greatest, budgets weren't the greatest, so when someone retired, we just took that opportunity to use that money elsewhere in hopes that somebody else could do the job. I will tell you that I do support this, and, you know, if the, the whole committee wants to put it into Finance Committee, we can take it and discuss it, but I would be prepared at this time to support you and make a motion to follow a recommendation of the superintendent and fill this position.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Miko?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine, can we just get the specifics on the, the pay rate on that, just for the public?
I, I- Twenty-six dollars an hour. It's an eight-hour position, twenty-six dollars and sixty cents an hour.
And the role would be to support the human resources?
Yeah, particularly in the areas of health insurance and retirement. Retirement being such a critical factor. Because of, of this lag over the past few years, we have some people who have been waiting for, through no fault of anybody, for their retirement request assessment a year, and it, it just doesn't make us look good.
Yeah. I would also support this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Olympia?
I would second that motion.
So, Mrs. Carpenter, did you want to make that in the form of a motion? Okay, so the motion would be to follow the recommendation of the Superintendent, Dr. Levine, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Any other comments on the motion? Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. I'm just trying to do the math on this, and I see that Dr. Levine has provided us with a memorandum that indicates that we've spent approximately $10,000 in overtime for the first half of the year, and he would, and he would expect that same number to be spent in the second half of the year. Through the chair to Mr. Stanton, maybe, what would you envision the cost of a hire at the salary, the contractual salary to be for the balance of the year?
Through the chair, depending if this person was new, if this person was new, they would get ninety, ninety percent. But I anticipate if we were going to have this position for about four and a half months, it would be just a little bit over 20,000.
And, thank you. Through you, through the chair, to you again, Mr. Stanton, and this is a position that would be a full-time position and would come with benefits as well?
Correct.
So are you able to, and I don't know if you are, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, are you able to articulate what the actual cost of the, of the employee would be if we were to fund this position?
For the rest of the fiscal year. If this person was eligible for benefits, if it was a single plan, it would be prorated about 5,000. And if it was, if this person were on the family plan, it could be upwards of 15, again, prorated. So I would probably be safe to say that this position could be cost between 28 and 30,000.
And through the chair, I don't know if it's Dr. Levine or, or Mr. Stanton, what, where, where would we get funds for at this point in the budget to, to satisfy this obligation?
We would take it from the high out, low in.
So you've identified that funds are available if we were to fund this? Thank you.
If there's no objection, I'd like to ask a question. I, could, I mean, could this position be a part-time position? I mean, is, is that, you know, having a nineteen and a half hour position, or having a nineteen and a half hour employee working every day, doing that additional work that's required, would that be sufficient to, for the office to function?
To the chair, yes. Well, I, I, I don't know if it would be sufficient, but it would certainly help. I would support anything that you, you allowed for. We are behind, however. We remain, even with the overtime worked, and all of the efforts of the people who are presently in the business office and in the human resource office who work literally from the minute they walk in the office until the minute they leave, they don't leave their desks, we're still behind. So for at least the rest of the year, I would prefer a full-time position to at least catch up and then take a look at it through budget for that discussion of a possible part-time position. We could also better reassess that over the next few months.
Because I, I, I do know that that's a very busy office, and thankfully we have talented people in that office that are working hard. But again, I think we always have to be cognizant of the fact that we're going through some challenges now budget-wise. We're going to be doing some cha, having, going through some challenges again very shortly when we prepare, prepare for the next year's budget. A full-time position plus benefits, you're looking at 60, 65,000 approximately. If we were to bring in somebody on a part-time basis, that's about 20,000, even if we pay some additional overtime. There's a big delta there. You know, we have to make decisions this year's budget, certainly coming up, you know, and I want to make sure that we're making those right decisions. So there is a, there is, you know, a, a way I think we could potentially give some relief to that office, which they need, but also be aware of, that's a, that's a, a large addition to the budget. And if we go full-time, hire somebody now full-time would be very difficult to then go part-time, if somebody's in full-time. So that's a, that's a factor as well. So I just wanted to, to add that in. I, I do, I do want to recognize that the office needs help, and I do want to support that. You know, my feeling would be to go part-time and then see how it goes, and then, then evaluate, you know, maybe if it's another full-time position and when we do the next budget. That'd be my feeling.
Through the chair. I would certainly support that if that's the way the committee wanted to go, to amend the motion by Mrs. Carpenter. And I want to emphasize that the mayor is absolutely right. We're experiencing the same challenges in this year's budget that we did same time last year, and the money is nearly the same. Now, we were able to work through that and get to zero with the help of the mayor and Mike Gingrich and the good, hard work of Jared Stanton and my administrators, who were very, very careful about spending money the whole second half of the year, which they're doing now. We hope to be able to get to that number as well by the end of this year, but there are tremendous challenges moving forward to next year's budget. A, an expected-
Ten percent increase in health insurance?
Whatever we negotiate for raises, step and track, will eat up anything that the mayor is able to give us. We, we have some very serious issues to discuss as we move forward, as we discuss this upcoming budget. So the mayor is absolutely right. We are not on tremendously solid ground right now with this year's budget, and we will be on less solid ground beginning next year unless we address some major issues.
We do have a motion on the floor, Mr. Miko.
On the motion, I would, I would recommend to the committee to also look at the part-time position, make it a part-time position, and then we can look at it come May for next year and move forward with that to the full-time position.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miko. Any other comments this time? Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine. My recollection of this position was when that person retired, we did not fill it, and then those responsibilities then became part of the city side, because we had merged, we had joined our HR department with the city side. So those responsibilities turned over to somebody else. When we separated again, who has been taking care of those and for how long have we been having a Band-Aid on that position that we used to have filled because we were on the other side?
Through the chair. So it's the business office. It's the two ladies in the business office who have taken both health insurance and retirement benefits. Each time someone requests a workup on retirement benefits, it takes about 10 hours-
Is that right?
-from beginning to end for each, each person. So that has been the, the burden. And then managing the health insurance and all that comes with that has been another burden. And they've done as well as they can, and we're just at a position where we need some help down there. We're, one of the problems we're doing, we're burning out these people. It's the same people working the overtime, so they're not only working their 40 hours, but they're working beyond that, and they just can't keep doing it.
Right. So, you know, with all due respect, if it's the will of the committee to begin with a part-time person, that's fine, I'll amend my motion. But I just want to remind people that we, we also need to take care of our staff, our staff who is also taking care of our staff. It's something that we took away, we thought was being taken care of, it didn't work out. And, you know, we can start off with the part-time, I'll amend it, I'm going on what you're telling me. If we're holding up people from retirements or, or getting their business in order, that's not right either. But, you know, given the fact that we might have a tight budget coming up, I completely understand, we can evaluate later. You know, what is it that you, that you'd like to do?
Through the chair. I would be comfortable with the nineteen and a half. We can evaluate the impact of that nineteen and a half hours over the next four months. The business office will give us great feedback on how that has helped and whether or not we need the increase, and I'll bring that information back to you during budget discussions.
I, I just want to make sure, I, I understand that, because I know we attempted a couple of years back, and it didn't go very well, the consolidation of the Human Resources Department.
Not payroll.
But not, it wasn't payroll, it wasn't business. I, so that's why I want to make sure that-
This was just an attrition, this was an attrition issue, if I may. This, my recollection is that we had a retiree, and we chose not to, we, we chose, it was a, 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 a period in which we had bad choice after bad choice because the funds, funds weren't available, so we had to make some really hard decisions, and one of the decisions that we made was not to hire someone to replace a retiree in payroll. The payroll has always remained with the school department. We did consolidate Human Resources and Human Resource Directors, but payroll, my memory is, has always stayed, our side of it has always stayed the less, and yours, the city side has always stayed the less.
Yeah, that was my understanding. I just wanted, I was, I just was uncertain. I wanted to make sure we spoke that through, because I know we tried that, the Human Resources, and that didn't go well.
And respectfully to everyone involved, and I appreciate, we all need to support our staff and we need to fund positions that we're told we need to fund. This is the first mention of the, this position needing to be filled since that cut, which was about four years ago. And I think had it been brought up during budget times for a full-time position, it, it would get more consideration. You know, my, my reservation with it, and I think the mayor and other committee members share it, isn't that we don't need this person. It's not that we don't need to support staff members, and we, we appreciate the hard work that everyone in the business department and, and the Human Resource Department perform not only for us, but for everyone else in this, in the district. It's, it's just a difficult, it's, it's difficult fiscally, understanding how we get along with everything else and funding a position that wasn't in the budget at all. So if we can offer some relief, and we hope, I hope that we do, with, with the nineteen and a half hour position, I hope that everybody understands it's not indicative of lack of empathy for the hard work that people are putting in on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any other comments, or, Mrs. Dunn?
I think some of, some of the confusion may be that this was a position ended through attrition, but it was a position in the HR department-
That's right.
And then the business department assumed some of those duties.
That's right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood. Okay.
So these are duties that would be through the business, I know that they, they work so closely together, it's, it's hard to have, have a seam in the middle. It really is seamless, so.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, the, the position that, that was lost through attrition handled retirement and health insurance. When that position was lost, it went over to our business office.
Right.
That's what, that's what happened. So even though it was in Human Resource, it was doing the, the job that eventually went over to business without any further help.
All right, that makes sense. Okay. Mrs. Carpenter?
Would you like me to amend? I'll amend my motion to change it to a nineteen and a half hour position.
I'll second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you. Very quickly, we have received a donation to the Carroll School Grade Five Activities Fund from the Metro Credit Union. I would ask you to receive.
Motion to accept with gratitude, second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? It's a vote.
You have in your packet an FKO enrollment update. You can see that both programs have had significant increases in enrollment. We have had great success with this program, especially this year. The Before the Bell program has really solidified. We met a few days ago to discuss moving forward. We are in the second year of a three-year contract. I will have some contract recommendations for you in the spring. I would ask you to approve the field trip by DECA to Boston.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Motion made for approval by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Anodes. All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm staying.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. And send them a note wishing them well.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask for approval of the field trip request by DECA to Atlanta.
Move to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. Move to follow the recommendation of the superintendent with the wishes as well.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval of the field trip, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Abstain except for the well wishes, which I support.
Yes.
Yes.
I would ask you to approve my field trip to the Bahamas.
You'll need a great big bus.
In your packet is a copy of letters that I sent to Senator Lovely, Representative Walsh, and Representative Speliotis regarding Circuit Breaker. I am pleased to tell you that the legislature has taken this up. And as a matter of fact, has made a proposal signed by a number of senators and representatives to put the full $33 million gap back in the budget for Circuit Breaker for this year, and then fully fund Circuit Breaker at 75% for next year. So in a myriad of bad news in the budget for a whole variety of reasons that I have discussed, the Circuit Breaker is, seems to be a shining light, and I think that will gain back about $151,000 next year and around the same this year. So that's what we're hoping for.
And I did want to say, Dr. Levine, that this was a very well-written and strongly argued letter. I wanted to thank you for, this was well done.
Thank you.
And Mr. Arnotis informs me that they're calling that the Levine Bill.
Mrs. Dunn, did you have a comment on the level?
I just wanted to add to what you said, Dr. Levine. This is wonderful, and I was so pleased to see what you did and read what you had sent to our delegation. That was wonderful.
Thank you very much. And Representative Walsh has been tremendously supportive of a whole variety of things for education. I just met with him today, as you know. So please send our best well wishes and thanks. And I can tell you, the legislature is taking this very seriously. There's a big briefing coming up for all of us. Great. Thank you. You have a monthly accountable unit report, and I have sent at your direction, thank you letter to the Luda's Environmental for their donation and to the PBD House for their donation. And with that, I am through with my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine, for that report. Next, we'll go to our written communications. We do not have any at this meeting, and we will now move on to subcommittee reports. I did provide, and I did the best I could, the committee assignments. I want to thank all of you for, really, all of you were volunteering for a number of committees, and it was difficult. I tried as best I could to give everybody the assignments, but I wasn't able to do that. But thank you for volunteering. That hasn't always been the case in years past, but everybody was so eager to take on some of these challenges. And we also have, that's been brought up, there are some subcommittees at more ad hoc, specific issues, issue committees, such as redistricting, that I think we'll be taking on this year, as well as, was mentioned earlier, about the school start time. So those issues may come up as well. We'll be putting those committee together, putting those committee assignments together as we move forward. So we can run through now. I don't know if there's too many updates, but I did want to run through the list, see if there are some. I do believe there are some. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman, anything to report?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a meeting, I believe it was January 10th, here at the Higgins Middle School with the Higgins Middle School staff. Mr. Amico was present at the meeting with myself and Ms. Mertag, as well as some staff members here at the middle school. And we continued to talk about the science curriculum and science textbook adoption. This was the last year of this school system that we spoke to on this subject, and they did more of the talking than we did. They were equally as enthusiastic as the elementary staff and the high school staff. They did talk about some difficulties with the curriculum in terms of it being more multi-discipline than the prior curriculum, that there were some difficulties with coordinating where to stop on a particular subject area and coordinating with either sixth grade or, we talked with seventh grade teachers, with sixth grade or eighth grade teachers in terms of where to pick up so that there can be seamless transitions from year to year in the multi-disciplines of science. They praised the book, the new textbook. They said it was a valuable resource, that there were tremendous assessments within the book, and they were able to align the book with the standards. They continue to work through, I think on a statewide level, it wasn't just a PBD issue, on a statewide level, understanding the nuances of those standards. Some of the standards that are, that were implemented don't provide for clear guidance, and the staff in PBD, as well as throughout the state, continue to work with the state in terms of identifying what those standards are and meeting them. The teachers that we spoke to also said that the students are tremendously enthusiastic about the new textbook and about the new curriculum, and that they feel that there's tremendous learning that's going on here as well. They reiterated what the staff at the middle, at the high school and elementary school told us at prior meetings insofar as need for more common planning time. There's a tremendous desire for increasing the ability for staff to converse with each other, both among the same grade level and vertically, so that they can fully utilize the curriculum and the textbook.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
We are in active negotiations with almost all of the unions. I think we just yet to schedule about two more. And all the dates are listed in your packet. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. School safety, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report.
Athletics and wellness, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to request from the members if we could hold off on approval of policy J I C H, which is our alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. This was to include the information about the jeweling. And the only reason I ask if we could hold off is just to make sure if there are any other names in the vernacular that we might need to add into this where it's policy. I know it's easier to adjust the handbook than it is for policy. So I would like to schedule a quality and standard subcommittee in the next two weeks, you know, before our next school committee meeting, to take care of that. I'd like to speak with someone up at the Health Center, and also just to check in with the high school to see if they have any other names of things people are doing. I don't know how else to put it, but to make sure that it's accurate, where we're naming a specific action. Thank you. And then the other item for quality and standards is we need to begin to review some of the policies that are coming from MASC to be placed into the policy manual. So those should be coming out shortly. Just a little heads up.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Anything to report on the liaison to city council advisory boards?
Yes, actually, thank you. We had a parent advisory board meeting last night. Mr. Olympia and Mr. Amico were there, and we were very well-informed by Mr. Stanton, by Maureen Rose and Chrissy Flynn from our Food Services Department. It was a great meeting because a lot of the questions that parents had, they were able to get good information, and of course, they'll be bringing that back to their schools. Some of the issues that parents had talked about, that people were wondering, why couldn't students who wanted water instead of milk just get a bottle of water as opposed to the carton of milk? It's actually against federal regulations. They have to be provided with the milk. We cannot do a substitution. If a child has a life-threatening allergy, a note from a doctor needs to be sent in to the school nurse or the principal. That would be referred to the cafeteria. And at that point, the director of the cafeteria would need to make a determination on what type of a dairy substitute could be provided to that student. It was really an interesting conversation, yes. She also spoke about if someone has an intolerance to dairy, there can be no exchange and no substitution. And what she was recommending to some of the parents was if their student did not want to drink milk, then the student doesn't need to take the milk, but we have to offer it. We have to provide it. And if there was a difficulty in that respect, that they should send in a bottle of water or juice or whatever their student wanted to have present with that lunch. We could lose our reimbursement if they did the exchange. And that's because all of the, all of the school lunches are subsidized by the federal government. And the rule's pretty strict. That really was a great discussion.
I would suggest that that's democracy in action. The milk lobby is very strong.
It is, yeah. It is. They said that, we were informed that one thing that Mrs. Rose does, she provides gallons of water to each cafeteria, to each school. And if a student wanted a glass of water, that is provided at no charge. So they don't have to buy a milk. That's at the elementary, at the elementary schools. And she knows. She's a mom. She said, you know, some kids just won't drink milk, but they have to provide it in order to comply with the law.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico, then Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair, the committee, and Ms. Dunn, and maybe Mrs. Stanton. Do we remember what the amount that we received from the government was? Was it $192,000? Because that's what's in question. If we do, are in violation, we would lose that fund.
Yeah, $198,000? Or was it 1.9 million?
No, I think it was $198,000. I wish.
Give him milk, give him milk!
You gotta drink the milks and like it.
I do have this written down. It was, it would cost us, if we wanted to give every student free and reduced lunch, if we wanted to provide every student with a free lunch, it would cost us $3.8 million. Because that's on the second page of the notes, but it was into a discussion about how do schools get the free breakfast and how can parents actually help with the process of a school reaching the cut point for free and reduced. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair. I wasn't able to confirm that number today, but it does sound right. I will double-check that number tomorrow, but it is about $198,000, I want to say.
And it was a great presentation.
It was. There were some longstanding questions that they had answered.
Yeah, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to Ms. Dunn. I wasn't able to get to the meeting last night, but it sounds like you had a lively conversation. Was there any, was there any discussion of violation of religious beliefs that had to do with milk and forcing milk on someone in a public school?
No, that didn't come up. There's probably a regulation for it.
Yeah, but I would think that would almost be covered under, I mean, they would have to apply for an exemption.
So if someone had a religious objection for having milk with meat, for example, that would be something that Ms. Rose would be able to approve and... Just, you know, it's just interesting how the...
Yeah, that's...
You know, it would violate the First Amendment, I think, and it would be an interesting subject if we couldn't accommodate a child for religious reasons.
If I may, through the chair, I believe that you're absolutely right. If we were forcing them to actually drink the milk, what the regulation says is we have to offer it.
Right. And one other interesting point was this information is put into the point-of-sale system so that the staff member who's bringing up that lunch knows if a child has an allergy to milk, that they're going to have something different on their tray, that, you know, it's going to be something that's provided by the food services, but it would be different. She mentioned lactaid or something like that. There are different things she has to look at before they make that determination. But it is all strictly governed by parental input as well because one of the things parents didn't know is that everyone has been entered into the point-of-sale system. And parents can opt out of that, and some have. Some have opted out and said, "I do not want my child buying school lunch." They're sending a lunch in, and then in some cases, the student isn't eating the lunch that was sent in, and they're buying a lunch. Or they're charging the lunch, and then the parent gets a bill. So that led us into another discussion of how people are, you know, paying the bills. Actually, Mr. Stanton could probably give a much better description than I can. But one thing that impressed me was the respectful manner in which our staff is contacting people about the overages on the school lunch, how no child will go without lunch, but they are working with families to catch up on payments. Some people didn't realize, the person who said, "Take my kid out of the lunch program," hadn't realized that the child had been charging quite a bit of lunches and, you know, was buying them for his friends. Other people, you know, if there's, as I say, if there's an allergy to any food, that comes up on the screen. So the students are being monitored in that way as well. The, I'm sorry, there was a question in the past about sour milk at some of the schools, and that was addressed as well. Ms. Maureen Rose is on top of that problem. She is really, really checking into it. She explained how sometimes, how it could be happening. But she was adamant about how she is watching for this, how she's dealing with the vendor, and how if there is a problem, people have been directed to contact her directly. You know, the teacher's on duty. If a student brings back milk, or the cafeteria has to report it to the principal as well as letting Maureen know, so that she can speak to the vendor about it. Another interesting thing, produce and vegetables come from the government. They have to come from the United States of America. If they open a package of strawberries, for example, and this was the direct example she gave, they get a shipment of strawberries. All of the containers say, you know, "Product of California, California, California." They find one from Mexico, they cannot use that package. It has to go back. That's another law. All the food has to be from the United States. Fruits, vegetables, everything meat. So that was, I'm telling you, this was a really interesting meeting. All of the determinations for which school has a specific level demographically to meet criteria for free and reduced lunch, it's the numbers from October 1st. So any of the numbers in our schools from this past October, 2017, will be utilized in April to apply for next year for any of the programs we may be eligible for. For example, the free breakfast at the Welch. She also wanted people to know that those applications for free and reduced lunch are available all year. So if some family situation changes and they become eligible for a free and reduced lunch, she wants people to know that they need to apply because that is part of the social programs which are designed to help our children. And she said, "Some people don't realize there could be a death in the family and a, or a loss of a job and a huge impact on their finances." If they qualify, then they should come in, fill out the paperwork. They'll help them, they'll help people fill out the paperwork because it is confusing. But that way, children are guaranteed getting the benefit of the school lunch program. And many people did not know that. They thought, once you filled out those papers at the beginning of the year, that that was it. Nope, it's year-round. And let's see. Parents asked some very good questions about this. They also asked, as a suggestion, that perhaps the school lunch letter that goes out every year, that it could be put into the welcome-back packages so that people are guaranteed getting that right at the very beginning of the school year and that it be highlighted so that people know they should fill that out, they should send it in. They're actually, right now, there's no benefit to sending in 100% of those. But they did say that they are able to sometimes find people who didn't realize they were eligible and that they will contact them through the paperwork that's submitted. And again, make sure that they realize that they can benefit from these programs. So that was, that was part one of the meeting. Part two, we had a nice presentation by the Randy Lemon G M Memorial Playground Committee. Erin Thor and Haley... And they were so enthusiastic, and they were wonderful to listen to. The presentation was great. They have a mock-up of the playground. And one of the things that the parent advisory board has talked about in the past, came up again last night, and I would like to ask this committee to refer to quality and standards for further work. There is a huge difference in building a school playground, and many of the PTOs who do that, or I should say playground committees, because they kind of become a subcommittee of the PTO, but they have to come up with money for maintenance. And we wanted to work, actually, talk to you, Mr. Mayor, about the intersection of the school playgrounds and the maintenance and the park and recreation department, and try to come up with some kind of policy, because as the playgrounds age, and the funds that the building committees have raised, it may not match up. So we wanted to speak to you about that. And I thought the best thing would be to go through quality and standards, to kind of formulate the questions and the issues, and then take care of it from there. It's a long-term thing. It's nothing that would be done in the next couple of months, but going forward, it might help everyone.
Okay.
And that's all I have for the parent advisory board. The next meeting will be on the 26th of February, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico, anything on building your grounds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be scheduling a meeting for February 13th, so if you can check some schedules on that prior to the regular school committee meeting. And just on the center school playground, the basketball courts or the basketball hoops, I have some fourth graders who are on my case. So if we could, a couple of them had mentioned to me that spring's about 55 days away, and they're ready to go in the spring to practice for next year's team, and we'll go from there. Hopefully, we can get those done.
Yeah, through the mayor. I'm sorry that we didn't get those done before the cold weather came, but it'll be a top priority for the spring.
Yeah, they're threatening persuasive essays and argumentative essays heading your way, so.
And by the way, I have to rely on them, because they defend me against social media stuff, against closing schools, so.
Yes, they do.
And Joey Amico writes very persuasive essays. He really does.
That's right.
George P. Biddy statue. Thank you, Mr. Amico. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I scheduled a meeting for February 7th. It's Wednesday at 7 o'clock at the Higgins. I'm going to have, again, the Brown School Playground Committee come and speak in front of that group. Also, too, I'd like to start to discuss, maybe April 2nd is Autism Awareness Day, and I would really love to discuss with that committee about maybe a citywide awareness, where maybe every school is wearing t-shirts, uniformed t-shirts, light blue type of thing, and I'd like to discuss that in a little bit more detail in that meeting.
Yeah, please, Mr. Olympio. We've, in the past, and I think we could do more as a city, we put the blue lights on, light it up blue. We put blue lighting around City Hall. But yeah, let's push that and widen the awareness.
Okay, great. Appreciate the support.
Through the chair, John, if you would just remind us at our level, so that we can get all the schools involved.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. We did have an executive session prior to this evening's meeting. There were two items. The first item, I'm very happy to report that we have reached a verbal agreement with Kara Murtagh to be our next superintendent, it's a three-year contract. We'll be putting all those terms we agreed to into an actual contract, and provide that to Ms. Murtagh for her signature and our signature. At that time, we'll be releasing all of the terms and providing that to the public. But we have reached a tentative verbal agreement, so, thank you, Ms. Murtagh. Also, we had a number of executive session minutes that we voted to release an executive session, and I'm going to read those dates now of these executive session minutes that were, again, voted to be released in executive session. May, excuse me, March 12, 2014, October 14, 2014, October 15, 2014, March 10, 2015, April 14, 2015, June 23, 2015, August 11, 2015, September 29, 2015, November 24, 2015, December 8, 2015, March 28, 2017, September 26, 2017. Those minutes were voted by the school committee to release. New business, hearing none. All items for the next meeting will be handled in the regular course, and thank you for a good meeting. Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.